All right, thank you so much. The time is 6:00 PM. We are going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Wal.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Cordis.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you so much. Let's begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
At Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first call to the public is for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members, bearing response to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised or may ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I do have two this evening. The first is Ms. Kathy Adam in regards to the Quinn building.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My name is Kathy Adam. I live at 240 East Regals here in Florence. I'm here on behalf of myself as an individual tonight, although I am a member of the HDAC Commission, very concerned about any building potentially being demolished. So, I feel like I'm in the movie Groundhog Day, or This Is the Building with Nine Lives, because we have done this, I think, several times before. I'm very sorry we're back to this state again, and I do appreciate your indulgence over the years, because once the building is gone, it's gone forever. I'd just like to say a few things. I want to make it clear that, of course, I do not think we are at the point yet where we can make an educated decision on demolishing the Quinn building, and I'll tell you why. When we back up a few years, we were told that the building was structurally unsound and was a life safety issue. It was later determined that was not as imminent as we first thought. The Commission held off and held off till we were legally responsible to make the decision to give the demo permit, because you can only go 180 days or something and not issue it. Then a solution was found, and unfortunately, it was not the answer we had all hoped for. I did not see in here how we came to the estimate on what it would cost to rehab the building. If it was in here, I'm sorry, I don't know how you read, there's a lot to read. I would like to know a little bit more about that, and I did see the staff recommendation that if the council would like to rehab another building or build new, and the recommendation was for the old Michaels property or the county records building. Well, those are properties that are already gone. So, yeah, it'd be wonderful to build on them, but we're not demolishing a building. The Quinn building would have to be taken down. We do have some new news in terms of provenance and ties to significant members of our community, but I don't want to speak out of turn. I'll have them speak if you make the decision to maybe hold off and investigate. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Adams? Do you know if those members are here this evening? Okay, thank you so much. And Ms. Gramazio.
Good evening, Mayor Walter, Vice Mayor Anderson, Town Council members. My name is Stacy Gramazio. I'm here on behalf of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. On February 16th, we held the Second Annual Memories on Main Street Car Show in downtown historic Florence. It was a huge success, and I'm proud to say that we doubled the amount of cars from last year's event to over 300 entries. Not only was it a win in the number of participants, but we had many businesses along Main Street open for the event. They experienced good traffic, and from what the Chamber has heard from their feedback, it turned into sales and a great day for their businesses. In the two years, this has grown from a dream that was just written on a napkin to an event that people all over the state look forward to. The public feedback that followed on social media was very positive, and hopefully you all saw how many car enthusiasts were remarking positively about the town of Florence. But this wouldn't have happened without some volunteers who worked tirelessly. So, I'd like to recognize that team that made it all. I think Bo, are you the only one here? Okay. So, Jerry Prendergast is a resident of Florence for over 20 years and the owner of Prendergast Towing. He is not here. But we do have Bo Randall here. He's a relatively new resident of Florence, moving here two years ago, and the owner of Randall's Towing. So, we thank you very much. Another volunteer was Jeffrey Kramer. He's a resident of Santan Valley and the owner of Big Kahuna Marketing. So, we've already presented them with some thank you gifts from the Chamber, but we wanted to officially recognize them here tonight. We rely on volunteers like this to make the Chamber successful. So, on behalf of the Chamber, we thank all of you. And we look forward to being an even bigger success next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time during Call to the Public? Okay, at this time, we are closing Call to the Public. Item 6A is for a presentation of the second quarter fiscal year 2018-19 budget presentation. Mr. Joe Jarvis.
That previous presentation was way more exciting without about to go over it. But we still need to go over this. We've made it through, we're almost to the nine months, but we need to go back and look at how we did in our first six months. As we've talked about before, when it comes to the general fund, I'm not going to talk about every single revenue source. I'm going to focus on the ones that make up 80% of our general. They are listed here on the screen. General Fund Revenue. What we have is, in this first column, it gives you the description of the revenue. Second column talks about how the second quarter did in last fiscal year and how our second quarter did this fiscal year. Third, fourth column is the budget for this year, and the fifth column is our forecast. The last column is the co-ordered comparison between quarters, last fiscal year and this fiscal year. Councilmembers, do you have any particular questions on these revenue sources?
Madam Mayor, I do have a question. Does the total from all of the general fund accounts exceed or is it equal to or less than the projected expenses?
That's a great question. As I've been reviewing the revenue compared to the expenses, we are collecting more revenue than I'm anticipating spending during the fiscal year.
Okay.
So, I anticipate that we'll be adding money to the general fund.
Thank you.
Now, this is on the general fund expense side. We have our second quarter compared to our second quarter this fiscal year. Spending is a little bit up, but I'm anticipating that we are going to spend within our budget, if not less than our budget, and less than the revenue we're going to collect. Moving on to the major revenue, other funds' major revenue. As the council members are aware, we have numerous other funds for a variety of different purposes. I focused on five particular ones, which included our enterprise funds, and of those funds, I focused on the specific revenue within them, because they have small revenue sources and large revenue sources. Does the council have any questions on these major revenues? Okay. Now, this is the expense side of those same revenues. And in these situations, I'm anticipating that each of these particular funds, we will spend less than the amount of revenue we're going to be collecting during the fiscal year. I'm anticipating each of our major funds will have revenue added to their fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. Any questions about the other funds' expenses?
I did have one question, and as I was originally going through the PowerPoint, I just didn't know why the number from the capital fund for second quarter fiscal year 1718 was so much substantially less than the others.
That's a good question. So, when it comes to the general capital fund, staff puts together a number of requests in order to make capital purchases that will be made from the general fund. Once that budget is approved, staff then goes through the process of procuring those particular services. Sometimes it requires engineering, sometimes it requires just making a purchase of, like a vehicle. And last fiscal year, we were not quickly making all of our general fund capital purchases. We made most of them in the second half of the year. But as you're seeing this fiscal year, we made a few of them in the beginning of this fiscal year. We had some conversations in October, talking about some of those capital purchases. Per the direction from the council, we held back on making some of those capital purchases. I think we're going to have some more discussion about that this evening, about the Co-Capelli Moon Saloon. And so, I'm not very concerned about the fact that there's such a drastic number difference between the two fiscal years, because we put together a plan within the budget that included the CIP budget. That was adopted. Staff moved forward with those particular projects unless we ran into a particular hurdle, or we put in a delay.
Thank you so much.
Good question. The sanitation fund, looks like our second quarter spending is higher than the income.
Let's go back to the...
The income was $437,000.
Yep, it is. So, the income is $437,000, and we spent about $450,000. Now, that may be partially due to the timing. Brad expects to be paid in a certain timing, and we are collecting the money at the same time. I'm not concerned about the difference between those two because of the number of customers who are coming into town and out of town. As we may be aware, customers may choose to put on hold their sanitation account while they're out of town, whereas they can't do that with water and sewer. And so, there is some fluctuation as to when the revenue is coming in. But the expenses do reflect the number of customers coming in and coming out. Overall, I'm not concerned about the fact that there's that slight difference.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wal.
I may be reading this wrong, but in the streets fund, the fiscal 1819 forecast for expenses is 7.9 million, but the forecast for revenue is only 3.4 million.
And that's a significant difference. Let's talk about that difference. So, what I did is I reviewed the forecast on my expenditures. I based my forecast for expenditures strongly upon what the budget was. We were planning to do all of the capital projects and all of the operational expenses during the fiscal year. Six months in gives us a strong indicator, but not a great indicator of how we're going to spend for the rest of the year. Once I get to three quarters of a year, then I'm going to have a much better sense of how we're going to spend for the whole fiscal year. So, you'll notice that we have budgeted $7.9 million. That included a number of projects, capital projects. And as you rightly pointed out, the revenue is only 3.4 million. What makes up some of the difference between those two is the HERF bond. In 2016, the town secured a HERF bond with the proceeds from HERF revenue. And each year, we've kind of been budgeting that we're going to spend it all, but we understand as we get into the year, sometimes we run into challenges, and we're not able to spend as much as we anticipate. So, if we overexpend in that fund, which I anticipate we will, is because of the HERF bond. If you remove those capital, if you remove the HERF expenditures of the, excuse me, if you remove the HERF bond capital projects, then you'll have a balanced budget, or we'll be collecting a little more revenue than we will have in expenditure. But if you incorporate that HERF bond in, it's because we've already collected the revenue in a previous fiscal year, and we're spending it as we move forward.
Thank you.
That was a really long answer.
I understand. When you throw in the bond, I understand. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Billingsley.
Joe did an excellent job of answering that question. To add to what Joe said, not only is the HERF bond included in that, but keep in mind that originally, we were going to do Florence Gardens Phase Four and then separate and do Florence Gardens Phase Five. We decided to do both at the same time in order to achieve some savings in terms of economies of scale. So, four and five of Florence Gardens were done at the same time.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Excellent presentation, Mr. Jarvis. All right, item B is our Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Plans, Unfunded Liability Presentation. Mr. Scott Barber.
Mayor Walter, a member of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening about an important issue. As we began to do our preliminary preparations for the fiscal 1920 budget, it was my desire to bring some attention, call some attention to and bring some focus to an important issue that we need to have on our radar screen in the coming years, especially in light of recent action that was required of Mayor and Council in regard to developing a pension funding plan and accepting the liabilities and assets as described to us by the Public Safety Retirement System. And to that end, I developed what I called a white paper concerning an unfunded liability issue, and I provided that information with a short presentation to our Budget Committee and gave each council member a copy of that as well. I was asked this evening simply to make a presentation in regard to that white paper and be available to answer any questions that you might have. I've got to back this thing up right here. So, let me run through these slides very quickly, and before I do that, I want to make sure that everybody understands that on the Public Safety Retirement website is information that I'm giving you this evening. Every single one of the 250 odd plans are required to have an actuarial report performed every year, and then the aggregate, all of the plans together also have an actuarial report that aggregates all of the individual results and provides that to the Board of Trustees. This information for the town of Florence and every other member is available to anybody that would care to look at it on the PSPRS website. And so, we have our Florence Fire Department and Florence Police Department actuarial reports for the period ending June 30th of 2018, and that's the information I'm providing for you this evening. Just from a demographic perspective, to give you a frame of reference, as of July of last year, on the police side, we have 24 active participants. We have seven retirees in the plan. One individual is in the Deferred Retirement Option Program, and I think we've talked about it in the past, where qualified employees are able to, quote, retire, unquote, enter the drop program, and then for a period of 60 consecutive months after that, may maintain employment. They no longer make contributions to the retirement plan, nor do we, and they must separate no later than the end of that 60-month period. So, we have one individual in the police department in the drop program, and then there are eight individuals who are vested in the plan but are not active. So, these are individuals who may have put in the number of years that are required for the vesting under the rules and the laws of the state of Arizona, but they have left active employment, but they left their money on account, if you will. And so, they still belong to us, if you allow me to use that term. They are vested, but they are not active, and we have eight of those. Over on the fire and staying with the police plan, when you look at the difference between the fund assets and the fund liabilities, generally speaking, actuaries run their magical formulas, and they come up with whether or not we're able to meet the long-term liabilities of the plan, our plan, based on the demographics, mortality tables, all of the things that they fold into a calculation. And if there's a positive balance, then you are deemed to be overfunded, if you will, or over 100% funded. And any negatives then are considered to be unfunded liabilities. A number of years ago, the rules relating to public finance reporting changed to require all of us to report our unfunded liabilities and pension programs on our annual financial report. And so, if you look at our CAFR every year, our Consolidated Annual Financial Report, CAFR, you will notice every year, these unfunded liabilities are recorded, and so they're booked, if you will, and they're recognized on our balance sheet. So, you see from our police plan, as of June 30th last year, we have a net accrued unfunded liability of current year, $956,293. That's an increase over July the previous year, which was 844-063. There's some unique things, there are also some unique things that are included in the actuarial report. You may recall that there was a citizen ballot measure that was passed by Arizona voters that tried to address the issue of the significant unfunded liabilities of the Public Safety Retirement System and created a new tier plan for those individuals who came to work in Public Safety Retirement Membership Plans after July 1st of 2017. So, that's a new Tier Three plan. It was intended at least to change the perspective and change the rules in response to some negative rulings about you can't change retirement benefits promised to someone. And so, the new Tier Three was put in place, and the approach to that is very different. And I'm not sure I understand all of it, and I won't bore you with the details, except that there's a pooling that's accomplished for sizes of our plans like ours. And so, our plan notes that there's, it was an automatic uploading of a separate liability in the Tier Three pool group, but our financial statement or our actuarial statement says that this is not actually recognized right now as an ongoing unfunded liability. But I simply note that in terms of providing you full information. So, that's the picture on our police plan right now. We're just shy of a million dollars in terms of unfunded liability. Turning attention for a moment to our fire plan, the number of actives we have in Tier One and Tier Two are 25. We have two retirees or their beneficiaries, in the case if a member was deceased. We have two of those. There's no one as of June 30th of last year in the drop program, and we have two individuals who are invested in the program but are inactive. And that's the picture on the fireside right now. Here's the financial picture, and there's a dramatic change from 63017. Our unfunded liability was about $334,000, and the next year, July, or June 30th of 2018, unfunded liability increased to 739947. There's a number of reasons why numbers change from year to year. As a matter of fact, I had an opportunity to speak with a gentleman by the name of Nick Ponder, who's a financial person at the League of Cities and Towns, and Nick's background is in pension, and he promised me that he would sit down with his knowledge and our actuarial study and figure this out and get back to me. But I do know that there were several issues from year to year that impacted, and those include increases in the payroll base. Retirement calculations are made for employees and employers, and under Public Safety Retirement, the employee share is statutorily set at 7.65% of compensation, but the employer's share floats in terms of actuarial studies. So, that changes from year to year, but it's based on payroll. And so, that base changes from year to year. And certainly, we know that during our compensation plan update last year, there were some significant increases, particularly in the fireside, and those will be reflected in coming years. They're not exactly impacting here. We also know that there was a COLA granted as of 7/118 for retirees. So, when there's a cost of living increase that is put in place, even as for retirees, it impacts our system and the actuarial calculations. And so, that's one other factor that changes the numbers from year to year. Also, the amortization method can change, and members, entities were offered the opportunity to change the amortization period for their unfunded liability if they chose to help smooth the impact out a little bit over the course of 30 years. We did not do that, but many entities did in order to give them more opportunity to get their arms around their unfunded liability. It was also the Hall-Parker settlement, and again, I briefly mentioned that a moment ago. This was, this was a lawsuit that took many years to make its way through the court system. The state legislature tried to address the issue of the sustainability or the unsustainability, if you will, of Public Safety Retirement, and they made some changes with legislation. Those were challenged in the courts, and Hall and Parker were named, the lead, named defendants in the litigation, and the courts ruled against PSPRS. And so, there was a very long, involved financial calculation determining how much money people were due back, participants were due back, and we were certainly a part of that, as every other member entity was as well. And so, those settlements came into place. We're also waiting for another one right now, that we don't know what the impact it will be, but it involves those individuals who were in the Deferred Retirement Option Program. We've had one individual for a fairly short time on the police side in the drop program, but there were some, there was a lawsuit challenging some action by PSPRS on drop participants, and it's, the best advice that PSPRS had from their attorney was they were going to lose. And so, they have decided to not be engaged in protracted litigation, but go ahead and try to figure out undoing what was done previously. And so, that is, we're still waiting to hear about that. And again, it only involves those employees who were or are in the Deferred Retirement Program. And then finally, pure planned demographic changes. Everybody gets a year older every year, right? And so, the demographics change, the PSPRS changed mortality tables, as life insurers do from time to time, to reflect life expectancy on the part of individuals in our society. And there's other factors that are involved in the calculation as well. So, those are the things that happen from year to year that can change the numbers. And so, if I get any special revelation on the dramatic change in our unfunded liability on the fireside, I'll certainly, you know that. But I was asked to bring that data to you this evening. I'm not proposing, I did not propose for us to do anything particularly in the 1920 budget, except bring some attention to it and bring some focus to it. We've already, according to the law, we've complied. You've adopted a pension funding program, a policy. You've gone ahead and accepted the assets and liabilities as presented on our plans from PSPRS. And we're doing one other thing. We introduced, we suggested some legislation to, through the league process this last year. And the, I attribute this to Chief Strayer, saw this in the 2018 legislative session. Our fire districts got the ability to transfer excess funds from pension programs they may have had before they entered the PSPRS and be able to apply those to unfunded liability balances. And we looked at that and talked with the league representative. We should be able to do the same thing, because we actually have that kind of a legacy plan. We've established our pension program for our part-time firefighters many, many, many years ago. We continue to maintain that plan for those individuals who work for us part-time, and we do have what's called a forfeiture account or excess funds. And so, we were able to go through the league's vetting process in terms of their committee structure, leading to the Resolutions Committee, and the league was gracious enough to put our legislation on the league legislative agenda for this year. We were fortunate to have Senator Frank Pratt champion our bill in the Senate, and it came through the Senate with no opposition, and it's been transmitted to the House. And so, we'll be watching over in the House. We certainly anticipate that Representative Shoep, T.J. Shoep, will champion our bill over in the House. So, we're really pleased about that, and if we're successful, then we will engage our administrator of our part-time firefighters' pension plan, we'll engage them in an actuarial study to determine the amount of dollars that are needed to fulfill our obligations to all of those individuals, current, past, in that plan, and to make payments for promised benefits. And then, we determine that we're, and we identify excess funds, and we hope to apply those excess dollars to our unfunded liability in our PSPR. those excess dollars to our unfunded liability in our PSPRS fire plan. I stand to answer any questions you might have about the presentation.
Councilmember Cortez?
So, because I'm new, you lost me at a deficit of $956,000 and $739,000. So you're telling me that we don't have enough to fund our retirement for these two programs?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
PSPRS is not representing that to us either. Because the fact of the matter is that out, out in the world, there's a rule of thumb that really isn't, it shouldn't be our standard, but typically, you hear people say all the time, if your pension program is 80% funded, you're good. Well, PSPRS is not 80% funded, and you really need to be 100% funded, and that should always be our goal. What they're telling us is that based on everybody that's in the plan today, they make all the projections for benefits that might be due, based on all of the things that actuaries use, we would come up short. But just like social security, there's always money coming in, money going out. And so there's no expectation being created of coming up short on being able to pay benefits per se. The issue here is, and for the very first time several years ago, we all need to be paying attention to that, because that's real obligation for us. It's not going to go away. Nobody's going to come in and pay it. Unfortunately, others have issued the checks, if you will, in providing benefits over the course of a long period of time, but for a variety of reasons, we now find ourselves sitting here, and all 250 odd member plans have to pay, have to pay the bill. And so the issue here is awareness and focus, and why PSPRS, why the legislature said, we want you to establish a pension funding program, because we know at that point that you and the fire district boards and all of the others, the state legislature and the DPS and the school boards, everybody will understand what is out there in reality and be working toward addressing those deficits. But in terms of creating the alarm that we're not going to have money, that's not the purpose and the intent.
Now, in reflecting back at the most recent league conference, I recall some conversations in regards to where we sat in comparison with other municipalities our side. And if I remember correctly, we are actually in a very good position. Would you talk to our council and people about that for a moment?
And the fact is, when I look, when I looked at those entities that we compare ourselves with compensation, it's all over the board, really. There is so much variation in terms of, of how long your plans have been in place, you know, the, the age of your, of your group and all those kinds of issues. It really is all over the place. But I would certainly represent to you that our $1.7 million is, is not very much compared with, certainly compared with some of our neighbors. I know one of them has a combined pension liability of $41 million. And if you look at the aggregated report available to anyone in public safety retirement website, and I think I've noted it in my white paper here, what the, what the overall aggregate liability is across the board is $8.8 billion. As bad as that is, I had an opportunity to sit as a league rep for a year on Public Safety Retirement Pension Task Force. And part of our work actually ended up being taken by Debbie Lesko, and it ended up being the citizen ballot measure that created tier three to help, to help kind of stop the bleeding going forward and try to, try to begin to right the ship. As bad as, one of the things I found out, as bad as we might think we are, there's some, there's some pension plans out there that are in extremely, extremely serious, serious, serious position. And to the point where you begin to, you begin to wonder that they're not going to be able to, they're not going to be able to, to do what they promised to their retirees. But, so to answer directly your question, I would represent to you that, that our, our situation is not nearly as bad as, as a lot of places. And the first, the first step in getting better is to recognize that you've got something, you've got something you have to address with your, with your health. And so that was the only purpose here. I hope that our bill gets through and is signed by the governor. I hope we're able to impact the fireside particularly, because that one has grown the most. And, and we're going to be looking at the other techniques that I listed on my white paper here, about how we might chisel away of that. But I'm not proposing at this point in time to include anything in 1920, because we, we want to be able to settle things in a little bit more.
All right. Well, thank you, and I appreciate that creative solution that you both worked together on and bringing forward.
Have a question.
Yes.
Do we get a bill for this, or do we calculate what our liability is? I mean, how do we come up with these numbers?
We make, every payday, we know what, what we owe Arizona State Retirement System for all of our employees that are in that plan, public safety retirement. So we make those payments every pay period, and they're based on the payroll. And they address, to, to the extent that they can, our, our current and future liabilities. There's, there's not going to be a point in time where, where in the foreseeable future, the PSPRS sends us a bill for $1.7 million. Because of the lawsuit that we, that was lost, in a very real sense, we did get a bill. And we had to accommodate what we had to pay on the, as a result of that loss. We were responsible for paying some things. We had to accommodate that in our budget last year, last year, I think it was last year. Yes. And we actually had to front the money for our employees as well, because PSPRS had no way of returning that money. So we were able to, we had to front the money, but we were able to take credits on a month-to-month basis. So we're, we're paying every pay period in terms of our current liabilities.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have just one question. With reference to the individuals who are no longer active but are vested in the plan, the two plans, can they withdraw what they have vested in those plans?
Yes. There's, there's standards on both of our state retirement systems, where employees who are, or are vested are able to withdraw their funds, and under some circumstances, get their contributions plus interest. And there's always, there's also a schedule, depending on how many years they have in the system, they're able to get a portion or all of the employer's contribution with interest as well. They can withdraw anytime. If any of these individuals reactivate with another employer, that liability transfers to the other employer.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Barber. Our next item is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time that that agenda item is called. We have our approval of accepting the register of demands ending July 31st, 2019, in the amount of $1,117,162.56. With that, I need a motion, if there's no objections.
Make a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign, and a motion carries. Item 8A, unfinished business, this is ordinance number 668-19, which is the discussion approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, amending the Town of Florence Code ordinances, Title 15, land usage, Chapter 150 Development Code, Section 150, 31 definitions, and Part 7, parking, loading and unloading, Sections 150, 156 to 150, 167. This was Case PZ 18-34 ordinance. Mr. Dana Burkhart.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Councilmembers. This agenda item is the second reading of the council's review of this ordinance. And to date, then, this item marks the final required process, both either by the state of Arizona or by the town's own ordinances. So with that, the council is open to taking action on this at any point forward from this agenda item. Mayor, you guys, the council, should have received a memorandum with outlining kind of some of the comments that were posed, or questions that were posed at our last, the first reading on February 19th. The presentation for this evening simply takes a higher level look and overview of what those comments were, and then staff's research and response to those comments and questions. So I'd be happy to take you through that, or if you wish to hop right into specific items that were in question. I'd leave that up to you, Mayor. Here's the list of the comments.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table this and move this to our work session and have more detailed discussion on it at our work session.
I'll open up the motion. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
I'll, I'll second that. I, I was under the impression that our work session, I believe on the 25th, was to include both the parking ordinance and the sign ordinance. And it, it looks to me as though there are some changes that were requested that were not made, even though you did send justification for not making those changes. I think we may want further discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this agenda item pending the work session after the 25th. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, Mr. Burkhart. Item B is discussion and possible action on a prioritization of construction projects within the historic district and related CIP projects that have been frozen.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I come before you regarding a hot topic that we have received a lot of questions about over the last couple of months, regarding expenditure of funds in the historic district, specifically to several different projects that weren't anticipated during the budget process. The first topic is the Quinn Building in the downtown. This is a picture of the Quinn Building. It sits at the intersection of Main Street and I believe 10th Street. It is adjacent to the town fitness facility. This building, as was mentioned in the call to the public, has been a topic for a number of years. Several years ago, the town staff made a recommendation to demolish the structure for human health, safety reasons, was taken to the H-TAC at that time, and was approved. The, there was a structural report done in 2007, based on us taking the property back. We, we sold the property and had a revision clause in the contract that allowed us to take back the property, if in fact, the individual that bought the property did not secure that facility and make sure that it was structurally complete and not a, a public safety nuisance. And here's some of that background. On September 4th, we were asked to approach the individual that had done that initial study, the architect that had done that initial study. That study was done in 2007. We went forward and contacted that individual and, and directed them on a site visit. What the individual was able to determine is the building is actually in worse shape, significantly worse shape than it was in 2007. Structural members have been removed in the building, and the roof is falling in. You can see that placed two-by-fours to hold up some of the roof struts with respect to this. There's been additional erosion of the adobe structure itself in, I don't know if you can tell, but if you look at the far end of this picture, you can see that the, the adobe, there's significant portions of the adobe that are missing, and they've sloughed off onto the ground as part of, of a roof collapse. Recent row architects are, are the folks that, that did that. One of the things that was a surprise to us from a staff perspective, when they came in and reported on the structure, is that the individual that had actually purchased the property did, did more damage than, than what we had originally understood. Here's, here's an example of a structural wall that was removed in the middle of the building that essentially supported the roof. You can tell that it's been replaced by some two-by-fours and, and some plywood. So there's essentially two options with respect to this building, and I'm going through this presentation very quickly. The first is to engage that architect, to prepare architectural plans to secure that building, and make sure that it's structurally not a risk. That plan set would be about $15,000. As part of, of that document and conversations with the architect, they were also able to provide us a construction cost. Now, keep in mind that this is an estimate, but it's, it's what the architect believes it would take to, to fully support this building. Total cost is $330,000. And once again, that's not occupiable building at that point. That is a structural shell that has been brought up to code, and it would require TI improvements before it was occupied, based on what type of use was determined was needed in that building. Option number two is to demolish the building. We have reached out to the same demolition company that has tentatively won the bid for the demo of the Copecelli Moon Saloon. We would have to do another Phase 1 survey to see about elemental lead and other carcinogens. Asbestos is part of that demo, to see if that would have to be tented. That'd be about $4,800. And then the, the demo number came in actually less than what I thought it would be. So we're guessing about $22,700 to actually demolish that building. Moving on. And here's a final picture of the structural cracking in, in the adobe and up through the ceiling. Copecelli Moon Saloon, I think everyone is very aware, we've been to council multiple times, there was two fires in this building last summer, I believe in June, I'm looking at Dave. And significant damage. Used to be La Paloma, my uncle's place, my office bar. It was originally constructed 1912, 1914, to contribute or to the district. This is what the building looked like prior to the fire. On October 15th, council authorized staff to go forward and to bid for demolition services with respect to the building, not to exceed $300,000. This is what the building looks like now. I had the ability to go and walk the building with the demolition contractors a few weeks ago. The adobe wall that would be on the left-hand side of this picture has continued to slough off and fall in, probably as a result of all of the recent rain that we have received. October 15th, once again, with respect to, to the action, was to demolish the building and remove all of the debris. That shows that adobe wall. If you look at the far left of your screen, that's where the wall is actually collapsing. We also went through the abatement process as directed by council, went before our local judge with, with an action. We've received a notice of intent, and we were given an order to move forward with the abatement with respect to that building. Following the demolition of the building, of course, we will file all documents necessary to place a lien as per council direction. With respect to the Copecelli, there are two options as well. The first option is $46,860 would be to completely demolish the building on that site. Of course, that includes a contingency as well. The good news here is a $300,000, to not exceed number, in this case, could be done for less than $50,000 at sizable savings to what was originally anticipated to demolish the building and fill in the basement. The second option, our Historic District Advisory Commission requested that we take a look at the ability to demolish the remainder of the building and leave what's called the tack room in the back. We went and looked at that with the demo contractors, and you'll see a significant increase in price, and I emphasized to try and save that building. There is no guarantee that that building can be saved. If we choose option two, and the building falls down or has to be demolished as part of the process, we don't get it for $46,000. We have to pay the $65,000 with respect to that. From what I understand, they would go and essentially try to shore the walls of that building, and they can't saw cut, but try to separate the exterior walls from the walls of the main portion of the saloon, because they're adobe and they're all connected. So actually doing that separation, it's not like a concrete wall where they can go and saw cut it. They have to go and try to shore and, and remove. One of the challenges that the... saw cut it. They have to go and try to shore and remove. One of the challenges that the contractor has is there's a certain way, and they explained it to us in the field, that they have to access the building to safely knock down the walls and not damage adjacent structures. It's tremendously difficult for them to get on the site and do the demolition in the way that they want if they're trying to save a structure on that building. The structure itself has structural damage as well. One of its adobe walls has significantly eroded on the north side of the building. But there's the two options there, to completely demolish or to try and save the one building. The note with the asterisks at the bottom is if we decide to keep the tack room, there's an ongoing code enforcement issue here that is going to be maintained, as well as we're going to have to, again, absorb the expense to have safety fence around that building going forward. And no ability to lien for the cost of that fence once the abatement's complete. Silver King Hotel. Recent topic of discussion has had to do with the Silver King property itself. In our current CIP, we have $80,000 budgeted to do repairs to the outside decking as well as the stairs and the deck on the back of the building. We are awaiting SHPO and HDAC approval with respect to that project, but have been moving forward. In addition to fixing the decking on that building, it was recently discovered that there were code-related repairs that would be required as part of the building. Now, this is a very old picture from before it was occupied by a retail shop, but this is a picture of, I believe it's called Suite 202, Lisa, including the door that says "Exit There." We have engaged the original architect for the project in a contract and a PO for $10,250 to do some architectural plans that can be submitted to SHPO with respect to building, essentially a code walkway, a code hallway, to allow those folks in 201 to have code-specific access to the fire escape with respect to the building. If you go back and look, you'll notice that the decking is disjointed from the front of the building to the north side of the building. There's a missing piece. And the door that we're looking at on this slide is actually reflected in the middle of the deck on this side. So building a hallway to code to allow people access to the fire escape. That's estimated at about $85,000. We got a construction estimate from 50 to 75, so of course, we're taking the highest portion of that number. So with respect to the options that we're bringing before council tonight with recommendations, we have the two options for the Quinn Building. One is to hire an architect and subsequently a contractor to secure that building. Secondarily is to demolish that building. It's about 1,000 square feet. Then we have Cocapelli, complete demolish or partial demolish. And then lastly, the solution to the Suite 202 code issue. Staff was asked to provide a recommendation. Staff's recommendation would be to demolish the Quinn Building, to fully demolish the Cocapelli Building, to complete the Suite 202 walkway code issue. And the last bullet there was spoke to during call to the public, the money savings for this project, as you know, we have a partnership with Pinellas County on the old vacant elections lot. For the very similar money that would be spent to secure the Quinn Building, we believe that a new structure could be built in downtown, owned by the town, as a built-to-suit for economic development. Budget expenses on hold. A lot of the stuff that we just spoke about was not anticipated. We didn't anticipate spending money on the Quinn Building. We didn't anticipate having to demolish the Cocapelli Building. We certainly didn't anticipate building a code walkway in the Silver King Hotel. So council decided in September, or asked staff in December, September rather, which projects could be held with respect to the CIP so that we had general fund monies available to do these projects. These are the projects that were held at that time. One of the things that I'm recommending tonight is that we have plenty of funds to move forward with the decisions before you regarding those top five items, accounting for $245,000, in that we continue to move forward or take off hold purchase of, I believe there's a police vehicle and a fire vehicle and the $94,000. So here is the all-option slide. So what we're really looking for tonight is council to give us a recommendation in terms of which options you want us to move forward with.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to open up the conversation to the floor. Council member Larson?
I just wanted to first ask, in respect to the Cocapelli, we still don't own that property or have any type of title or any rights as far as we have a lien on it, but we don't have anything else.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, we tried very hard and actually had a couple of different settlement meetings with the property owner as we were going through the court process to try and acquire that property, and we were unsuccessful.
Madam Mayor, if I may interrupt just very briefly, please note, just for the record, that council member Hughes stepped down off the dais to comply with restrictions in the redevelopment statutes because she was a former tenant in the Silver King Hotel, so that prevents her from participating. Thank you.
Thank you. You said that so much better than I could have, Cliff.
Okay, could you go back to the picture of the Silver King, the exterior view? Okay, so this section right here, that's where what's upstairs is at?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so the issue is on the other side of the building, not having that exterior staircase?
Yes, ma'am.
So what are we, what is the recommendation? How are we fixing that? Are we building another staircase, or are we going to extend that deck right there so that they could come out that door, walk around the building, and go down the stairs?
Madam Councilmember, I'm glad that you asked that question because I'm not sure I was completely clear. So when the original architect drawings and renderings were done and the approvals were received from the state and from the entities providing the grants, that deck was never supposed to go all the way around. And the solution that was provided in the plan set was that if that 201 suite were to be occupied, there was to be essentially an alcove or a walkway provided inside of Suite 202 to provide access to the exit door that's shown in this picture. That was never pursued by the town. We never paid the architect to do that design. We found this out after contacting the architect and asking him why a design would have been provided that did not meet the 2006 code. His response was, well, if you look at this sheet, you'll notice that this area was hatched out. The town never paid to have that done. So essentially, the $10,250 we've authorized is for the architect to design per code that alcove so that the folks in 201 would have access to the existing fire escape.
So that'll take space away from the current, that, the other space, so that'll take some of theirs away?
Yes. But cheaper and easier than
Than extending.
Than trying to cantilever off of the outside wall of a historical building or building a second set of stairs.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Okay, you're talking about 201, that's on the south end of the building?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it does have a deck out there.
Yes, sir.
Couldn't we put a stairs down off that deck going into the Padilla Park?
In theory, we could, sir, if we could get that approved from the state. And keep in mind that that building's on the historic register and that staircase did not exist historically. The architect's recommendation is the option that has been provided regarding the alcove and hallway within Suite 202.
Okay, so you're saying you're gonna put in a hallway from that door?
Yes, sir.
All the way through the whole building to
No, sir.
To 201?
No, sir. If I can point, let me see if I've got some way to point. I have no way to point. Okay, if you look at the slide that's in front of you, you'll notice a door on the left-hand side.
Okay.
And then you notice a door, oh, there we go, I can do it here. There's a door right here.
Right.
In addition, there's a door right here. There would just be a small hallway that was installed between those two doors.
So they would still, they'd still go outside
Well, how would
That door, okay.
Yes.
But there's no deck in the back?
No, sir. They'd go interior to the building. As council member Corda said, you'd reduce the square footage in 202 marginally. There would essentially be a hallway in the back that gives those folks access to the fire escape.
They'd have to go outside.
Well, wait a minute.
They'd go outside, inside, then outside again. Yes, sir.
The, you're talking about, you have the escapes for 202. This is, this is a photograph of 202, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The people coming from 201, can't they just go down the interior stairs rather than
But they need to have two points of access. That's why the fire escape's there. So there's the stairs internal to the building, but the fire escape's on the outside to give secondary fire access to the second floor.
Well, I'm trying to visualize how, if you're gonna put a hallway from the back where there's no deck, I don't know why you would do that.
It's just
That, yeah, there's no deck back there. So why, how are they supposed to get from 201 over to there?
Let me show you. Let me go back a slide and I'll be able to show you. So they would come out of 201 and they would walk down to this point on the front of the building. This is the east side of the building. And there's a door right here.
Right.
They would go in the door. They would walk down here and they would go out this door, and then they'd proceed down the stairs.
Well, why would they need a hallway? The door's already there. Just all they have to do is walk through the
To protect the tenant because it would have panic hardware and would be available at all times. We don't want people having access to Suite 202. So a hallway is there to provide protection for the tenant in 202 so there's not access to their store.
I think what, I finally get it. And so I think maybe I can help you. Okay, so since that piece is missing on the exterior of the building, the patio, they're having them go outside and then come in the door into the suite, which was the next picture.
No, I understand how they're gonna get around there. I mean, I think the thing to do would be to connect the decks and it would make the building look better too, I think, but
I didn't know if you understood that.
I don't know about cantilevering it. You just put posts up just like the rest of the decks, but anyway, that's just my opinion, but whatever.
Have we explored that?
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I think I could probably fill in a few questions on this. The, let me see if I can point this. So to extend this walk deck here, basically you would have to come out past the building, the equivalent to what the stairways would be, it connected to. So that would require a structural engineering just because of the structure that would take in order to install that. So the actual, the lower cost of the issue of what we call a corridor, which is what Mr. Billingsley was saying on the inside, the re, and let me go into a little bit of how that works. That corridor is a fire-protected wall. So if there is a fire, the person as they're coming out of the, off the deck through the building is protected by sprinkler and fire-rated walls. So they have a protected egress all the way to those stairs. The building code is very clear that all tenant spaces on the second floor must have access to two forms of egress. So, and then the question comes up into ADA about how if it was a wheelchair, because we do have a wheelchair lift to get to the second floor. Those areas would be looked at as an area of refuge. There's some improvements that have to be done in order to satisfy those requirements. So the cost, to put the interior door, the wall in itself is minimal cost because it's a wall, it's fire-rated wall. There's some fire sprinklers that have to be relocated, I think air conditioning vents. But on the actual floor, the plans that were designed for the modifications of the building, this was already taken into consideration. That area was laid out on the plans, but it was never, it never formed from that point, but it's actually on the plan. So one of the expenses is not only we're talking about just this wall being expensive, is that because of the egress out of Suite 201, you would have to have an exit sign. So there's an addition of exit sign. Once you get out on the deck, there's also emergency lighting that's part of an egress issue, that we have to light the egress area under power outage. So there's some change of lighting, electrical that goes involved with that. The door hardware, some of the door hardware has to be changed because now it becomes an egress issue. So those are some of the costs. So even if we were to connect the two points, like you're asking in this area, those issues are still gonna be a cost associated because the lighting, the egress signs. The only thing that wouldn't happen is the drywalled wall, the interior wall that's put in place. That would be the only difference. And you would, it would incur a much larger bill, building this outside deck with the structural designs that would go behind it.
Okay, you answered my question.
There is a third option, if you were looking for another option, and that is to not lease Suite 201.
Well, what about a, one of those swing-down stairways on the front porch there?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. What was that, sir?
One of those drop-down fire escape things on the, on the front porch.
So you're, what, they allow part of a secondary egress is a stairway that actually folds down. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
That is an option. However, that is also structural. It would have to be designed, and it would have to go through SHPO and HDAC for the approval because of an addition to the building that never existed.
Well, you know, if I were in that building and it was on fire and I got out on that porch, I don't think I'd wanna go back in.
Well, the building code is very clear about not entering another building after, but if it's a protected corridor, that's allowable.
I don't know that's protected corridor. If I'm standing there and the building's on fire.
I understand.
I have another question. You'd brought up real quick about possibly joining those spaces. My issue is that taking away from that retail space, those spaces are already very small. So I struggle with taking away additional space. Would, how, do we know approximately how much it would cost to join those two spaces into one retail space?
There's really no way to join the two spaces based on how it is now. We just would not rent Suite 201.
Okay. Not, there's no way to like build the walls?
Elevator and the stairway is in between the two.
Okay.
Unless there was a rentor that wanted to utilize both spaces, and that would be an option.
Well, absolutely. I mean, that's more of a contractual question. But I was thinking more of the structural as far as making the hallway, making their one hallway that conjoins the two rooms.
That's another issue because then we would be putting another wall inside the building to provide access to one suite instead of two.
Right.
Because if we, if we chose to only rent the top floor as one suite, then those doors couldn't be locked to the other suites for fire access reasons.
Right. Yeah, okay. I was saying to make them one room, but I understand.
According to the architect, the easiest solution is the fire corridor.
There's also a concern that if you were to do what, you were talking about combining it, you still have egress issues because the outside deck is an assembly area for spectators. So that also would require a secondary egress to get off of the deck. As it is now, the only way off of the deck is back down through the original stairways. There's no way, once you're on the deck, to depart from it.
So just so I'm understanding that, because you just said it was an assembly space, that they have to have two exits up there. So we still would have to have a second set of stairs?
That's correct. You have to have access to it. So you're still gonna have to get access through the corridor to get down off the stairs if something were to happen. So if you have an assembly, you have a group of spectators on the deck, such as during a parade, and there's a fire in the lower unit, how do you get off the deck? Because now you have to egress down the stairs into the fire. That's why on the second floor has to have two forms of egress. So that stairs is still your second form of egress. So it still takes away the idea.
Okay, I'm with you. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Wall?
First of all, this, all three of these topics are kind of overwhelming when taken all together. I'm hoping that we can, if we're going to be voting on these taken all together. Um, I'm hoping that we can, if we're going to be voting on these items, that we can vote on them separately. Um, some of my questions, I'll start with the Quinn building. I'm not clear as to what has changed since 2015, when HDAC agreed that demolition was the best option. Um, it sounds to me like things have changed significantly for the worse since then. Um, on the, the Cocopelli, uh, I understand the cost difference between keeping the, what's called the, the tac room versus demolishing it as well. Um, yeah, I guess we just have to decide whether we wanna go to that additional expense. Uh, as far as the Silver King is concerned, recognizing that we're, we would be taking away square footage from what's upstairs, the, the tenant of Suite 202, um, in the write-up, it was indicated that the town would consult with the tenant after construction begins. And I would like to strongly suggest that we should be talking to the tenant now, uh, so that the tenant understands what's being proposed. Uh, I think that's only fair to the tenant.
Steph, uh, reached out to the tenant, um, but has not had a verbal conversation. Uh, however, when I went and toured the building, uh, the tenant was there. Was it you and I, Jimmy, that went out and looked at it? When we went out and, we talked to the tenant about the need for fire access and where that would go and the building, what have you. So the, the tenant's aware, uh, but Jen, uh, Jen has tried to reach out and explain prior to tonight's meeting that this was gonna be on the, on the docket for discussion.
Okay. And last but not least, uh, it's indicated in the write-up that the PowerPoint presentation will be handed out tonight, and I'd like to request a copy of that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Well, um, I think the option at this point might be to, uh, not rent out 201. I mean, what do we, what do we get? Like 400 a month out of that or something?
$2,000 a year. We have exceptionally low rent.
Yeah, well, uh, it could be used for storage or whatever, for whoever rents the other 202. I think that could solve our whole problem here, not have to do any construction on the building. I mean, that's just my opinion. And then on the Kuhn Building, or the Queen Building, or however you wanna pronounce it, there's no way anybody's gonna buy that for 260, much less 329,000. So I think that'd be ridiculous to, uh, to try to rehabilitate that building. Uh, there, it just doesn't even make sense. That's just, I'm just giving my opinion here while we're in discussion.
Madam Mayor? For clarification purposes, if we choose not to lease out 201, we also cannot use the deck for an assembly, so parades and what have you.
And am I also correct in understanding that part of the current $80,000 that we have in repairs will be to that decking for the assembly of parades and?
Yes, ma'am. To, to repair the deck itself, it's in extremely poor condition.
Now, uh, you're saying that they can't use the, the deck because of the fire access thing?
Yes, sir.
So-
Yes, sir.
If I'm correct in understanding, we wouldn't be able to utilize that deck for any of the parades, for sitting, for viewing, or anything of that nature unless they had the two points-
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then I say build a hall then. I, I mean, it'd be ridiculous to have that deck not usable. I mean, yeah.
I, I feel, I feel that without speaking with the tenants and without exploring really financially what other options would be available for us at the Silver King, I feel it's a little bit premature for us to be making that decision, um, without looking at maybe outside structures, different engineering methods as far as different angles that we could possibly add on extra stairs, or what things that they might, might not approve. I feel that we need to sort of explore more of those avenues. Personally, I'd rather have all those options in front of me before I can make those decisions.
I'd like to see us also get SHPO involved and see what they would do for us, how much cooperation they would give us. They may say, hey, it's a great idea, it protects the building.
Well- Councilmember Cortez?
One, one thing I've learned in, uh, my two meetings with, um, the historical district is that SHPO moves very slow, if they respond at all. So that, I mean, and the fact that we're discussing Quinn and its deterioration and continued deterioration is an example of people not moving at the time they should. And I've expressed this concern before, that I get government moves slow, but when we're talking about buildings that are falling apart and if we could address them sooner than later, we might have been able to save this building back in 2012, if somebody, you know, so it's sad that we're discussing two historical buildings that we may or may not lose for sure. One of them's gone due to fire, and I'd hate to see that happen to another one. So I would stress that we can't continue to drag our feet on these issues. We've got to make decisions and we've got to move forward, and we've really got to start investing our money, if we're gonna do it, in buildings that can be saved and save them now, so that in two years, we're not discussing another building that the roof has caved in or some, I mean, it's, it's unfortunate, but that's where we're at.
I'm not, I'm not saying, uh, postpone anything. Well, one thing on the Kuhn Building, that was the owner that, that dropped the ball. That wasn't us. We put it out for bid, and, uh, he was the low bidder, and at that time, the majority of the council voted for his, his, uh, bid, and I voted for the, uh, contractor that was, uh, doing the, uh, library over here, because they were gonna do it, not charge us anything, and then turn it around and sell it for what they had in it. But at that point in time, the council voted to go with the gentleman that said he had all the money, he could do it and all that. I didn't believe it, and it, sure enough, it turned out that way, but it wasn't because the town was dragging their feet. That, that was the owner that, that blew that deal. And now, and then he went in and even tore the building up worse. It's, it's not a three, it's not, you know, I'm all for saving historic stuff, but not, I mean, when you got a building that's small, 300 and some thousand, there's a whole bunch of buildings that are for sale right now on Main Street, 180 to 300 and some thousand. The old gun shop, I think it's going, they're asking 350,000 or 20,000. I don't see any buyers flocking over there to buy it. So at this time, I don't see the town investing that kind of money in that small of a building that you, I don't think you'd ever recoup your, your, uh, investment. And it, you know, if it had a lot more flair to it or something and was really, really unique, I could see maybe doing it, but it's, it's just two flat walls on a corner. I mean, it, you know, it's a shame, it's the way it is, but it's, it's the way it is.
Madam Mayor? I think I have an answer to Mr. Anderson's question regarding SHPO. Keep in mind that when the Silver King was done, that was done with SHPO, uh, as well as ADOT with the Transportation Enhancement Grant. The plan set had in it the internal alcove as part of that approval at that time. Uh, I've been doing this for a long time. You get away with a lot more stuff doing changes to modernize the inside of a building than you do changing the outside. Um, I'm very confident when I say if we wanted to extend that deck or add an exterior staircase, very different world than doing the internal solution with the alcove that SHPO's already approved or reviewed.
I understand. I, I was, my other question is, what about putting a dividing 202 into two areas, into two rooms, with a hall all the way down? What? Did you know what I'm saying?
Yes. It's unfortunate that, that door is right in the middle of the room, um, from this picture. If it was off to one side or the other, uh, yeah, that, that might be feasible to run a hallway the whole, the whole length, especially on the east side. It's just unfortunate that that door is there, but it would remove a lot of square footage from both, both, uh, of, of those, uh, those units. 202 is quite large, uh, 201 is, is quite small. How many square feet?
Okay.
Oh. 728 for 201 and 1,400 for 202 in terms of square feet. 700 square foot space, pretty small.
And so with the, with the corridor, it might go down to 1,200?
Yes.
And if, if you've been in there, where they're talking about putting it, right now is, she doesn't utilize it as, um, retail space. She use, she has it blocked off and uses it kind of as like a little storage area anyways, so-
Because of the two doors.
Yeah, so she-
Would wanna have, well, they have to for fire access.
Yeah, she kinda already has it, not even really like a, a utilized spot anyway, so her or future tenants, whatever, if it's, I mean, it's for the safety of her too and everybody else.
Well, can I-
Absolutely.
On the, uh, I'd hate to lose access or use of the deck, so I think the hallway's the way to go, and if that was on the original SHPO plans, then we shouldn't have any problem doing it, and I think that'd be the easiest way to go forward and be done with it.
I have one last one. So if SHPO already has reviewed plans with that space, do we have to take it back to them? Cause they already reviewed it.
We should. Uh, it was an alternative in the plan set, but it, there, there isn't actually architectural plans for it, uh, so that's why we have authorized the PO to actually have the architect prepare the architectural plans that were an option at that time.
Okay, so I'm looking, and I just wanna take each item, not separately, but the discussion points that we'll have almost separately. And when it comes to what I'm hearing with this building, the Silver King Hotel building, that corridor is our best access point to be able to continue utilizing the patio, the stairwell access points, and we will communicate that with, you know, the tenant. Is everybody on that same page? Okay. When it comes to the Cocopelli, one of the conversation points that was brought forward this evening is the fact that we do not have any rights to that building. We, we have no ownership, and right now it's on the center of our Main Street. It's causing an eyesore, and there's really not a, not a promise that for an additional $21,000 more, that that tac room could be saved. So if I'm hearing our council correctly, in regards to moving forward of demolition without saving that tac room, or does somebody wanna speak differently on that portion?
I'd like to see us save it, but my concern is, we'll never gonna get our money back for it.
Correct.
Yeah. It's just gonna add to the cost, it's gonna add to the lien, and we don't know how long that lien's gonna stay on that building. Who's gonna go in there and pay $300,000 for that empty lot?
And I agree with that.
Well, I think we lucked out on the, uh, um, environmental part, you know, when they, the company went in and did the research, I was scared to death that, yeah, it was gonna cost us 300 and some thousand because of asbestos or whatever else, but the, thank God they didn't, it do, it was very, there ain't anything that, that bad, so I think we're really dodging a bullet on that. So I think, yeah, I say, uh, yeah, I'm ready to vote, or whatever you guys wanna do.
I just wanted to add real quick with the, in respect to the Cocopelli, um, with that tac room, I really would like to see it saved, but I think whenever you're working with a demolition company, that's what they do, they, they demo. So are they gonna take the precision to really try to save it? I feel like without us owning that property, it will be a liability until somebody owns that property, and we don't know how long that could be and what would happen in that structure in the meantime. So I feel that there's no guarantee long-term that even we would own it, or what that might even look like down the road. So, um, if we had owned that, I think we might be possibly singing a different song, or, or, you know, have other avenues to pursue, but I just don't see that as an option right now.
And one other thing I wanna throw in here, that I mentioned a while back, I, I don't know if I, but anyway, the parts that are made out of the old red brick that was made here in Florence, that's the same as in the rest of these historical brick buildings, if we could have that contractor, uh, those walls that are brick, not adobe, if we could have him haul it onto one of our properties, and, uh, then we could get people to volunteer. It's very easy to chip the, uh, the mortar off those, and, uh, and then we could possibly save those brick and, and, and use them to repair some of the brick buildings as they need, or, or even enhance them. Uh, it'd be a shame to just have all that brick go to waste, cause used brick is more expensive than new brick. I mean, we could even maybe, uh, have it a fundraiser for the teen council or something, and they could, cause it's easy, just one whack and it, the brick, that mortar comes off, be a good way for them to make money and then sell the bricks, you know? I mean, put them on pallets and, I don't know. It's just a suggestion, but-
Madam Mayor, I actually have an answer to that question as well. Um, Councilman Hawkins came to me and asked that same question. Uh, we've done some research with respect to that, and then Chris and I, when we met with the demo contractors, actually brought it up to the demo contractors. So there are several issues, uh, to, to think about. Number one, it's not our property. So, um, any, there's, and, and we pay the demo contractor because they rent the equipment to come out and do the work. So they will not come out and knock down that wall and leave it on site for somebody to come and pick it up, nor would we want that liability, cause we can't allow anybody on site. But secondarily, we don't own the brick. Uh, it is the property owner's brick. Uh, so there's, there's a challenge there, taking that brick and hauling it to a city site and utilizing that and putting that on pallets, cause we don't own it. Uh, it's, it's the property of, of the actual, uh, person that owns the building. Uh, we asked the contractor if, if they were familiar and if they'd handled situations like this before, uh, and they said no. Uh, however, we left it up to them if they would like to work with somebody, either the property owner or somebody else, uh, instead of hauling the brick, uh, to the dump, that once the contract was awarded, we would allow people to contract, contact the contractor directly to see if they could work something out, uh, with respect to that, and that's what we talked about with the contractor.
Well, I don't understand. You can take it to the dump, and then just because we don't own it, we, yet we can bury it, but-
Well, honestly, the contractor owns it after it's, it's knocked down to take it to the dump. Uh, so if they wanted to set up a situation, if somebody came to them, for example-
What I'm saying is, what if they just take it and dump it on one of our, uh, lots that were, you know, that's not out, I'm not talking about a lot on Main Street. I think we own some proper, I mean, out, out by the, uh, water treatment plant out by the federal prison, or the, you know, or the sewer treatment plant, whatever that is. That, I think there's enough room there. I'm not talking about a mountain of it, uh, but whatever.
If I may, I think I know what you were about to say. Um, if another organization such as the museum, which has a 501(c)(3) status, were to approach them-
Yes.
And say, would you bring this brick to our site? We have a spot for it.
Yes.
Then that takes the liability off of the town, and then that provides that material to still be used historically within our town through an organization that has their 501(c)(3).
Yes, we, we have, uh, that's, that's what we, we've asked the contractor to do, is if somebody wanted to have a site agreement with the contractor, just as you said, that wanted that brick, that they would, uh, work that out directly with the contractor. that they would work that out directly with the contractor.
Okay, that's a good idea, everybody. All right, the next item...
I'd like to mention one other thing about the Quinn building before we leave that. It was pointed out to me that was...
We haven't gotten there yet, but go ahead.
The Quinn building was the law office of Ernest McFarland.
Yeah, it was for a while, but it wasn't originally, no.
I understand, that was one of his law offices. Thank you.
You are welcome. Okay, so that's the next component, the Quinn building. What I like about what staff has brought to us in regards to this shows the ability to bring growth onto our town with that current abandoned lot that we could develop on, bringing in that economic development. With the Quinn building, looking at, I believe it's nine hundred square feet, is that correct? Approximately?
A thousand square feet.
About a thousand square feet.
But I'm not sure that's usable square feet.
That three hundred and thirty thousand dollar mark, that's significant from, you know, quotes that have been in the past, as well as where we are today.
There are two buildings across the street that are very sizable buildings, I believe two oh two and two oh four, Chris, Main Street, I believe they were for sale for forty thousand dollars. And I think one of those was three thousand square feet and the other one's fourteen hundred, something like that.
And if I'm correct from conversations, even going through and rehabbing it to make it structurally sound would, yeah, structurally sound, would still not improve, you know, the ventilation, the air, things of that nature, is that correct?
It would be to stabilize the building and make sure that it was up to code and allow somebody to come in and do tenant improvements in the building to occupy it, depending upon what their use is.
And then what is the price difference, if you would, between building new on that site that we have that we're looking at with the Pinal County Elections Lot versus the three hundred and thousand, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of rehabbing at the Quinn building?
There are so many things that that's dependent upon. Is it one story, is it two stories, is there going to be parking provided on site, is there not going to be parking provided on site? We can speak to a cost per square foot to build a building, and we could build a building significantly larger than the Quinn building on the County Elections Lot that would be modern and occupiable as a built-to-suit for less money than we would pay to stabilize the Quinn building.
And...
Just handed me a cost estimate in terms of dollars per square feet, and you could build a sizable building for that dollar amount.
And I know that, you know, our council has tried over the years in regards to working with the Quinn building, and, you know, you're right, we have saved it several times from destruction. And we're to the point now where we're looking at three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to potentially stabilize a building that we don't know if there's going to be a use for. And that's coming from people that have been looking at different sites within our Main Street of wanting to have a business, of wanting to do things here. So this is the last item that our council has to talk about in regards to this package, and I just kind of want to understand how everybody's feeling.
Well, like I say, I think we need to demolish it. There's no way we should be investing three hundred and thirty thousand dollars basically for a little nine hundred square foot building that, and that's just stabilizing it, that doesn't make it occupiable. So, you know, you can figure somebody to do the interior and bring it up to code on the inside, and obviously it would probably have to be commercial, so it's going to be very expensive, probably add another hundred thousand on there, and then you're almost to a half million dollars for a thousand square foot building, or nine hundred square feet, whatever it is.
And when you look at our rent practices, it's really not doing the taxpayers that justice.
Well, no, I think, well, I've already said what I think. I mean, you know, it's a shame that the gentleman that took it on...
Didn't fulfill his...
Didn't fulfill his, what he promised, and, you know, he gave a great acceptance speech and all that, but he didn't do any, I mean, actually, he destroyed it worse. It's in worse shape now, so. I'm just, you know, yeah.
Just doing some quick math here, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and normally you'd appreciate a building over thirty years, that's a good guess, that's ten thousand dollars a year, could we rent that for ten thousand dollars a year?
No.
Nobody would do that, so, there's no return on investment on this building. I hate to say that, but that's...
I agree. Councilmember Larson?
I just have a quick question. I know that it was spoken about with the architectural firm that did the community center over here, that they had interest at one point. I'm assuming, is that the same, or is it different than the RRA that is currently looking at it and making these quotes? Or have we reached out to that same firm to get numbers from them?
I believe that is a Lisa question. From what I understand, they were currently doing a couple of different construction projects for us, and they offered to stabilize the building at no cost to the town, and they're no longer doing work in town and have completed their projects, I believe Lisa reached out to them. But council decided at that time to not move forward and to sell it to this other individual, so I don't believe there was any interest in them coming in and renewing their offer.
I just didn't, I mean, I wasn't obviously expecting them to renew their offer necessarily, but I just wondered if we had reached out to them to see if, since we had done substantial work with them in the past, if they'd be willing to give us a quote maybe a little bit more reasonable, so I just wanted to see where that...
No, ma'am.
All right.
Councilmember Cortez?
I can just tell you, from a real estate standpoint, there's no way, there's no way you can spend three hundred thousand dollars on a thousand square foot building on a Main Street that is struggling. If we were in a thriving area where Main Street had thousands of people and had, you know, hundred thousand tourists in its prime season, we could maybe talk about it, but at twenty-two thousand dollars to take it down, we might, we might be able to recoup that on selling just the vacant land. And I know that there's buildings on Main Street that are listed for three hundred thousand dollars and up. Right now, they're not, there's got to be some drastic changes for those buildings to be able to go, and even that one, the gun shop, doesn't even have a certificate of occupancy, so you're not going to get that type of price for that. So we'd be, as sad as it is, we'd be, we'd be doing a disservice to our taxpayers to spend that type of money on a building that we would, we would never be able to recoup that money. It would, it'd be long after I'm gone, and I don't want to put that on my son or my grandchildren to try to recoup that money because it would take us a very long time, and I'm saying there would have to be some drastic changes to the town and the thrive of it for us to ever be able to make it an investment worth it. So it's unfortunate. It is really unfortunate, but I don't see any other choice we have.
Well, there's one other thing I'd like to really finish off with on mine, and I won't say anymore, but I think the citizens would, I think the majority, because they've been after us for years to get a stoplight at seventy-nine, you know, for us to drop that, to do that, to do the Quinn building would be remiss for sure. I mean, I think we'd have people up in arms if we dropped that traffic light in place of the Quinn building.
Madam Mayor, just to be perfectly clear with respect to Mr. Hawkins' comment, the reason that we put that hundred thousand dollars on the retraction on the hold is because that project was not going to go forward in this fiscal year. So that's, it wasn't to take away building that project, we're very reliant on ADOT to do that project, we're just providing one-third of the cost, that's what the hundred thousand is. It's now looking like ADOT will entertain that project in 2021.
Thank you. And Councilmember Wall?
I've almost lost my train of thought. It is painful to contemplate losing any historic building on Main Street. I'm kind of a glass-half-full person as opposed to half-empty, and I see both of the Quinn building and Co'apellee building as an opportunity for us to have a new beginning on Main Street, to give us an opportunity for further economic development that we all want on Main Street. And I assume that any building that is contemplated to either replace Co'apellee or the Quinn building, or to be built on the Elections Office Lot, would comply with the Historic District Guidelines. And so I do see this as an opportunity to start a new beginning, as painful as it is to lose these two buildings.
I agree, beautifully said. All right, with that, we've had our discussion, and it seems we have our direction. With that, I need a motion.
How are you looking for that motion to be phrased?
I was hoping to have the phrase in regards to, can we take this piece by piece, Ms. Garcia, or do we need to vote on an entire package? Because I feel...
Whichever you feel would be easier will be fine.
Okay, council, would you like me to take it parcel by parcel? We could. Would you like to make that motion?
I would like to motion that we follow the staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries, and it is right in line with everything that we had discussed. So thank you for bringing that challenging agenda item before us this evening. Hi, welcome back. Item nine A is under New Business. This is Resolution Number sixteen eighty-eight dash nineteen, which is the discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Arizona, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the town manager to submit an application for the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT. This is the fifty-three-ten grant program, which provides funding to service elderly and persons with disabilities within the community, Ms. Jennifer Evans.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This grant application will fund the purchase of a new twelve-passenger van for the senior center, and it also would provide funding to operate the Give a Lift program, in addition to providing funding for, excuse me, for preventive maintenance on the senior center's vehicle fleet. So this is a two-year grant program, so we're applying for funds to cover us from 2019 through 2021. The total grant application amount is eighty-three thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars, and the town share will be right about fifty thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Just for the sake of the audience, will you talk a little bit about the Give a Lift program?
I can, but if you don't mind, I'd like for Mr. Brian Hughes as the department head to speak on that.
Absolutely. Just to give a little bit of background of what this grant is going to support.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. The Give a Lift program just kicked off in January with Carolyn Ballard, who's our rec programmer, part-time, coordinating that program. It's basically neighbors helping neighbors get lifts to medical appointments if they do not have a car or they cannot drive, and we've been pretty successful so far. It's only been a couple of months since we kicked off January first, and they've been giving, I want to say around five, maybe more rides a week, and they have ten volunteers. So we're about where we thought we'd be a couple of months into it, and the more people that hear about it, the more people we're getting as volunteers, more people are calling for rides, and there's definitely been a need, and I think we're just at the infancy of this program. So this grant application would give us the opportunity to extend that for two years and grow it. It allows for a little bit of growth with our part-time staff incrementally over those two years, and I think it's a step in the right direction. So so far, like I said, we're at the very beginning, but I think it gets us where we need to go, serves a need.
Thank you.
This twelve-passenger van, who would you say, I mean, can we just buy a new van?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we did. This would be replacing one of our existing vehicles in the fleets that'll be aged out by the time that we get this van, so it actually would replace the minivan that the senior center has, so for, I believe it's a thirty-two thousand dollar vehicle, and I believe our match would be about seven thousand dollars. So it's a deal on replacing a vehicle again that we would probably get ten to fifteen years of life out of.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Councilmember Larson?
So I have spoken with Brent regarding some of our transportation needs within the town, and there's definitely needs that go beyond just the elderly, people who are public transportation reliant, and we've spoken about fifty-three-ten. So my question more relates to this being purchased under the senior center, would that narrow the scope of the users that are able to use that van?
Madam Mayor, council member, I'll answer this question. Fifty-three-ten program or section fifty through ten is specifically for elderly and persons with disabilities. So yes, it is limited, it's not for youth, it's for elderly and persons with disabilities, so that's why the senior center would apply. We are currently working on your request, and we'll be presenting to the Budget Committee forthwith.
Thank you.
Brent? Sorry, you said elderly and/or person with disabilities, or does, because then it would be able to be utilized for a younger person who had a disability?
Correct. If a younger person had disabilities, yes, it complies with the program. Yes, ma'am.
Get them to doctor's appointments.
It depends on the adopted program at the local entity. So in theory, if our program has approved, and I haven't read the application, if it was for doctor's appointments for the Give a Lift program, in theory, it could be for youth.
And that was precisely my question, was that in this application, does it narrow the scope so much that we only can use it for medical purposes and for elderly disabled, obviously, that's the main qualifier, but what other uses could it be used for? And if somebody is a younger person or even middle-aged person, anybody who has a disability that needs transportation, what are going to be the qualifiers or when they can use that van?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Larson, the van can be used, again, for elderly programs, so transportation to the senior center, to trips, to anything elderly-related, as well as anybody with disabilities. So if somebody with disabilities needs the same services to, you know, a program or to a medical appointment, things like that, we can use it for those purposes. If it's typically with the Give a Lift program specifically, again, that's volunteers sometimes using their personal vehicles to transport folks to the medical appointments. If there is a person with a disability or they're wheelchair-bound, at that point, we can also use our volunteer drivers who drive the vans with the lifts to get them to certain appointments or programs.
Can we use it to take elderly people shopping, like a Walmart trip?
We currently do that right now.
That's what I thought, okay.
Or disabled?
Yes.
Or to jobs, possibly? Or no?
That's...
Different program.
Not sure with that, but that, again, that becomes a scheduling issue with staff and volunteers too.
So that's a different program. That program to jobs is called JARC, Job Access Reverse Commute, that's a separate federal program. And there's another program that can also be used for jobs for elderly, and that's called New Freedom. So separate programs, not section fifty-three.
And those have their own separate, those all have their own separate grant applications, or do they have grants tied to them, or are those something...
They do have grants tied to them, they have combined some of those at the ADOT level now, but they're very specific to those classes of individuals, yes. For general public... For general public, that's a separate program called Section 5311, which is rural public transit, which is what we contribute to with respect to our regional transit service with Kudlidge.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions regarding this agenda item? All right, I appreciate your insight. I also appreciate that we're going after grants continuously and bringing a positive benefit to the town. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 1688-19.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? And a motion carries. Item B is Resolution Number 1689-19. This is discussion, approval and disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence in Penalee County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem Merrill Ranch, Unit 31, and authorizing execution by town manager of supporting documents. Mr. Larry Harmer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will try to keep this brief. This is the first time I've had actual use of my voice since last Thursday. So we'll see how we do here. The first plat we will look at is Unit 31. This was actually reapproved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2018 in August. It consists of 22.15 acres, open space, just short of three acres, which is primarily used for retention and greenbelt connectivity. There will be about three and a half acres right of way within the development itself with a net of 18.58. Total number of lots is going to be 113, with a density of a little over five dwelling units per acre. It's located just off the, for a relative location. You can see the bend in Hunt Highway, just west of Attaway Road. It's generally at this location. The plat is interconnected with Unit 33 to the north, which will be the next agenda item, and gives it the two points of access will be through Unit 33. This brings the overall total for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, including Unit 31, to a little bit over 1,235 total acres, and 3,880 total lots, bringing the density up there to 3.14 dwelling units per acre, which is still shy of the three and a half that was approved through PUD in its original approval. With that, if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Is this the land that's right next to the wastewater treatment plant?
It is south of the plant. The plant is located up here, the Johnson Utilities Facility. It is separated by the Unit 33. It sits up here to the north.
And is that CFD Unit 2, am I correct in reading that map?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, are there any questions? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1689-19.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item C is Resolution Number 1690-19. This is the discussion approval and disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penalee County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 33, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents. And I know that you just briefly explained it. Did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You know, this is completely separate from 31. It does have 146 total lots. This one does indeed wrap the south and east portions of the wastewater treatment facility. And again, just in summary, the density on this is 4.34 dwelling units per acre with proportional open space right of way. There, you can see it better where it wraps. It fronts or backs, depending on your point of view, onto Hunt Highway. There's state trust land over to the west. The Unit 31 you just acted on is to the south. And 35A and B is immediately to the north, which have been previously approved, final plat, and recorded. This brings the total number of acres out in Merrill Ranch that is under development currently, approved, is a little bit shy of 1,270, 4,026 total units, and still under the 3.5 dwelling unit per acre threshold at 3.17 total.
Now, one of the questions that I know that I've been receiving in regards to D.R. Horton, and in regards to their moving forward, do you know if there's any houses or any plans that they have released into the community yet, or when they plan to?
As far as the looks of them?
Yes, sir.
There's a booklet in the council's little meeting room, little conference room. We put together a booklet that shows their house plans and elevations. I've forgotten the exact number. I think it's about eight different floor plans. Each one has a minimum of three elevations. Material board or material pages are included in that binder that's in the room.
Okay. Do you know when they're releasing that for general public?
I do not. They have not pulled building permit yet for their model homes, although I understand that's forthcoming in the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you for that.
What kind of protection is there for the residents around the wastewater plant? How do we make sure that they don't have problems like we had up north with odors?
I believe there's an odor easement. Isn't there an easement tied to this one, I believe? So as a private utility, you know, I would presume that they would be required the same thing that we as a public entity would be, which is an easement disclosure tied to it.
I quite honestly don't know the answer to that question. I don't know what they do have, an odor easement or full containment and treatment. I've never toured that facility, so I don't know.
But do we have any liability for that, as being the town that's proving this?
I don't believe so, but that's something we can certainly get your response to. That would be an issue between the developer and those folks that buy those houses, since it's not a city facility.
Yeah.
For we... What would be the repercussions of tabling this agenda item until the next meeting, when we could get those answers? Because we do understand what a hardship it has caused the community to the north of us.
I'm not aware that it necessarily be any hardship at this time. They already have an at-risk grading permit for this area, if I'm correct? And so they're already doing, you know, the grading out there and all of that. This would be just to get their final plat approved and in the ground so that they could start putting below-grade wet infrastructure and laying out the streets for paving and curb and gutter. So as far as the timing of two weeks, I did communicate with D.R. Horton prior to the meetings. We had hoped to have representatives here. Unfortunately, internal conflicts that didn't allow them to be here. They indicated they would be happy if you were to go ahead and, you know, pass on both these tonight. They would understand if you did continue one for any reason, that they would try to make the next meet on the 18th.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would think that we would have a fiduciary duty to our future residents, because these will be Florence town, within the town limit residents, to make sure that the builder and the private company have met, that the builder is comfortable with the private water, with the private company, and making sure... I realize that it's not our company, and it's not our responsibility to provide this service, but living in Anthem and dealing with the services that are there, I would hope that we would do all we could as the town to make sure that they're going to be protected and that they're going to have the same standard of service that the residents that live within the Historic District and this part of the town, that they get the same service in that area as well. So I would support tabling it until we have some, just some assurances.
I'd just like to know the regulations as far as, do they have to provide the same level of service, or not level of service, the same barrier?
Madam Mayor, "they" meaning Johnson Utilities are governed by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, just like we are. They have to follow the same standards. It's tied to their individual permits for their plant. So they have permits, and those permits specifically are for the improvements that they have and what they're allowed to do on that site. One of those things has to do with noise and odor and what have you, and they have permitting for that. But I don't have copies of their permits, and I don't know the improvements that they have on site. So excellent question. We'd be glad to approach D.R. Horton and make it their responsibility to get those answers. But in terms of the town's liability, the town doesn't really have any liability associated with this.
All right, thank you. Any other council members have any comments, questions? With that, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to table this issue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item 11 is our manager's report.
Legislative report, correct?
No, town manager's report.
Oh, no, legislative.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading online. Our online is slightly different than our printed. So I apologize. Item 10 is our legislative report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just real quickly, talk about one bill that is certainly of importance to all of us here, as well as those residents of the community. That's Senate Bill 1165, which is the distracted driving bill, discussed at length over the last few council meetings. Just an update on that. That bill passed out of the Senate today, a vote of 20 to 10. So there is some opposition, but there is bipartisan support still on that bill. So it has been transmitted to the House, and we'll have discussion coming up in the House in the next few weeks in committee. And then we anticipate a vote on the floor probably the end of March, start of April. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions on other bills if you'd like as well, but that's short and dirty.
What was the opposition's reasoning? Were you able to...
Yeah, some of the same kind of discussions that's occurred in the past. More of the discussion on the nanny state is the phrase that's often used, that government shouldn't be involved in regulating what happens inside of a private vehicle. That's more of the discussion that occurs.
Councilmember Wall?
Do you have any information on the status of the bill that would restore funding for the Heritage District grants and such things?
Yeah, there are two of those bills. Actually, one was in the House, one was in the Senate. I believe they both passed out of their respective chambers. I'd have to double-check on those, but we can certainly look at that. We're signed in to support both of those bills. Obviously, any additional funds that we can get to our parks, and then by way of those grants, get to our historic downtown, certainly we're going to be supportive of. So we are registered in support of both of those bills, but we can double-check where they have...
Yeah. I've also expressed support to our legislators, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 11, manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to go through this quite quickly. In your packet, you have the manager's report. I don't think, we've talked a lot about the Historic Home Tour previously, so I don't think I need to go over that. I am happy to once again reemphasize our Workforce Education Business Series being put on by Central Arizona College starts tomorrow, March 5th, and that's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. $10 a session, or $30 for the whole series. We've got lots of information out on that, so that would be March 5th, April 2nd, May 7th, June 4th, and June 25th for the entirety of the series. So anybody who is interested, show up tomorrow, please, and bring your $10 or your $30. Next item, regarding leadership and governance, and this was mentioned at the last meeting as well. The CAG and SCIMPO MPO Legislative Day was February the 4th. We had two council members attend that, as well as Ben as their chauffeur, and I'm told that that went exceedingly well, and many legislators attended that meeting. Thirdly, under partnerships and relationships, myself and Chief Hughes were invited to attend a pretty neat meeting, to be honest with you, with government leaders from all around the state of Arizona, called Fighting Opioid Overdose. And we hope to come back at a future meeting with our county attorney, provide a presentation to council with respect to that topic area and the research that we did. And we're able to present, we were asked to present the rural perspective on the opioid overdose, and it was a very positive experience for both of us. Regarding transportation and infrastructure, one of the projects that's come before council multiple times is well number four. That well has been lined, and if you've seen, it was test pumped last week. So there were these strange metal apparatus over the streets, including ruggles with hoses attached, that's so that we can size the bowls on the pump and the size of the pump to get the production that we need to try and match our past production with respect to well number four. And lastly, in terms of infrastructure, Phase 2 of the 12-inch Waterloop Project was completed. So yay! And we're now working on Phase 3 of the 12-inch Waterloop Project. Of course, there's a list of upcoming events. Regarding success stories, we continue to trend above projected numbers for state shared revenues, and our sales collections are up as well, as is HERF. And there are no current advertisements on the street. That's all I have, with the exception of one item. On the screen, we are showing you our reporting system that was requested, and we had an individual, and Mr. Peter Chlorus, come to our last council meeting and say, you know, we need to have an alert system for residents and businesses when there are emergencies, water outages, et cetera. We were able to join Penalee County a couple of months ago with respect to the Everbridge System. We then had to go through a training process, and we have a number of employees that are trained now, I think, on an order of 10 within the town, including the chief, and obviously Ben, and folks in dispatch, and a number of folks received training. We did our first-ever release of information last week regarding a water break. This is a copy of the screen that shows that. Interesting things to take away from the screen is that individual outage was sent out to 826 total people. So you essentially go into a map, you identify where the outage is, and you draw either a circle or a polygon around the folks that would be affected by that outage, and all of them are notified, text, telephone, et cetera. There are actually a whole lot of people in Florence that have signed up. In this case, 826 people received a contact. The part that's kind of confusing to us is the fact that only 67 confirmed that they were contacted. So in the text, you're supposed to text something back. If you're given a voice message, you're supposed to give a message back to make sure that the data is collected, that you receive the information. So why there's such a low confirmation rate, that's something that we're working on. By no means are we infallible. We're still learning the system and clearly have had some challenges with implementation and kind of did some retraining. One of the things that Ben wanted me to reflect tonight is he's set up a registration link for anybody who's not registered that wants to register, and that's at https://tinyuri.com/florencealerts. And he will, I think it's already on the webpage, but he will make sure that he gets that on the webpage and social media for anyone that needs to sign up. I signed up last week. Lisa signed up last week. It was very easy to sign up, and we hope that folks start participating in this program.
I just want to clarify, that's URL, not URI typically.
URL. URL. Thank you.
Question. I signed up, but I didn't get a notice, because I'm not in the outage, is that right?
Correct. The circle, Ben showed me on the little map. I don't understand how to use this. But Ben showed me on the map that it was just the downtown area that was circled, so you wouldn't have been notified.
I wonder if they have to repla, like if we sent one out to all residents as a, are you getting this notice, please re... are you getting this notice? Please reply. Maybe that way you would have additional confirmed responses?
That's certainly a good suggestion.
Do we by chance have a reverse alert system other than this? Because I know with one of the recent outages that was a planned outage, had been discussed what time it would be shut off and everything. Not everybody that should have known knew because not everybody even knew about this system. And so it's extremely frustrating when you are sitting in a restaurant and you can't, you can't get what you were expecting to get because the restaurant, all of a sudden, unbeknownst to them, no longer has water. And then it affected restrooms and everything. So I know with the school district, there is a reverse system that will immediately, we don't have to sign up for anything. It's just part of it. It immediately contacts all of us, you know, just like in the case of an emergency. When there's a water outage, that's kind of an emergency for those residents that live in that and those businesses. Is there a way to let people know? Because if you don't sign up for this, we have residents that don't utilize this, the computer technology type stuff. How are we going to let those people know?
We're going to have a presentation on this at the next council meeting. So let's withhold questions with respect to that to the next council meeting. This is the system we have, and you have to sign up at this time to get, to get stuff from the session. But Ben and the two chiefs are going to present at the next meeting. They're a lot smarter than me.
Yeah, fantastic. Let's, um, take into consideration our residents who don't utilize technology, don't have access to internet at their homes. It's the same type of, at the school district, you're constantly having to think of how do you get in contact with those people that can't afford Wi-Fi, that can't afford technology. So I just want to make sure we're always doing best for all of our residents.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And our department reports. Does any member of council have any questions about the department reports? Council Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes, I've got a question, I guess, from Parks and Rec. The before and after bell program. We got this letter saying that the, I guess, the school district is no longer going to play with us on that, or what's that all about?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we received notification from the school district last Thursday that officially, starting next school year, will be working with a Right At School is the name of the program, and they'll be hosting before and after the bell programs. We're looking at options for running programs offsite if there's parents who cannot afford Right At School, their program, that we may be, be doing over at the community center or over at the parks. So we're going to still have some options available for, for folks that are looking for alternatives.
So this could cost us additional money?
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm hoping that we can do it within our current budget, but we'll have to explore that. If there's any extra transportation or things like that, there could be some additional costs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And call to the public. Opening call to the public. Come on up, Mrs. Kathy Adam.
Yeah, I'm Kathy Adam. I live at 240 struggles. I'm not surprised about the outcome on the historic district, and I, I absolutely understand the financial implications, and especially when you have something unexpected as, as a fire. There's only so much we can do. But I do want to challenge the council and town staff. Years ago, when we first heard about the Quinn Building, we were very specific at the HDEC Commission, asking the town to please, don't put us in this position again. And my challenge is, what has the town done to try to prevent any more demolition through neglect? In other words, we all know of buildings on Main Street that are being neglected. We heard, I heard for the first time at our last HDEC meeting, that we actually have code on the books, which allows the town to force property owners to fix leaky roofs. I note that the biggest enemy to all our Adobe buildings is water. If there is such a code on the books, and we had a commissioner report, she has a leaky building next door to her building, which these are all rowhouses and attached. So it's not only damaging the property owners, it's damaging the next-door property owners. I challenge the town, if there is such a code, please get proactive so we are not in a position of having to demolish buildings because it's simply cost prohibitive, and it is a safety issue. And I thank you. And I just wanted to follow up on the brick issue. I heard the museum mentioned, which I am a member of, I don't know how, but if there's somebody that would like to contact me, I would just be interested in exploring. I cannot make any commitments, but I'll raise my hand and say, contact me. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Benjamin Bitter will be, no, Mr. Christopher Salas will be contacting you. And this is our second call to the council this evening for current events only. Councilmember Hughes?
Well, I want to say thanks to Caliente for putting on such a great parade. The Spring Fling, I participated in it, and I was amazed at how many people were there, how they brought their grandchildren in. There was so much participation, and those people know how to throw a parade.
Councilmember Cortez?
Only new business I have is I got a grandbaby while I was gone. And I apologize, I understand you guys couldn't hear me very well. But I was here, just in spirit, and in, the ghost in the background is what I was told I sounded like, but, um, yeah.
Councilmember Lyson?
I just want to echo sort of the same sentiments about us being proactive going forward with these buildings. Something that code enforcement is very important to me personally. I think that was something that we need to be more involved with, and I like the direction that we've been heading. I wish we continued to amp up that effort. I just wanted to speak about, too, I went to the Spirit of the West Festival that was put on by the museum, and it was fantastic. My children enjoyed it. They had free face painting and things for them to see. And they really enjoyed the museum the most. There was a lot of history there. I think there's definitely a cornucopia of information, and I wish that there was more hands-on activities, that they could have brought it to life more. I feel like there's so many given opportunities there to involve the public and to really get them educated on all the, the history that this town offers. I also wanted to make sure to invite people out. I know my husband, he's a sports enthusiast, and he was, we're looking forward to the kickball game at Heritage Park on March 8th from 5:15 to 8:15 p.m. So I think it's a good opportunity for us to get together as a community and, and enjoy each other's company and have a little bit of fun. So I hope everybody comes out, and I'll see you then.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
Last Friday, I had an opportunity to attend the dedication by the Gila River Indian Community of their managed aquifer recharge facility and interpretive trail. And I didn't know what to expect, but as we drove up Oldburg Road in Sacatoon, I was shocked to see the lines of cars parked along the road. And it became obvious that this was a bigger event than I anticipated. When we, we had to be shuttled into the site, and when we got there, there must have been, and we were early, there must have been 250 people there already, mostly from the Gila River Indian Community, but also our governor, the Arizona governor, Doug Ducey, was there, several of our elected officials from the state, as well as the governor of the Gila River Indian Community and a lieutenant governor. There were schoolchildren there who performed the National Anthem in their native language, which was very moving. And there was a men's chorus from the, the community that performed some of their, their traditional songs. So it was a mixture of the state of Arizona and the Gila River Indian Community, all together in cooperation with each other to develop this aquifer recharge facility. The interpretive tech trail, we were given guide, guided tours along the trail. I had to turn back because it was a long trail, but it's, has signage of all the plants and the trees that are planted along the, the facility. And it's designed only for members of the Gila River Indian Community, not for the general public, which is too bad because it is a beautiful facility. It's, it's a huge lake retention basin for this recharge. They had a ceremonial opening of the headworks of one of the canals, and we began to see the water flowing into the recharge facility. And there was a lot of excitement because they are deeming this as the, the rebirth of a portion of the Gila River. And to the community, it is an extremely important and historical thing for them to see the water flowing again. It's, the, the facility was part of a five-year plan, and you've probably seen, if you've driven down 87 towards Chandler, you've probably seen all the construction of the various canals that have, has been going on in that area. And all of the canals were part of this five-year plan that the, the Gila River Indian Community developed in order to retain and restore their access to water. There was a lot of reference to the drought contingency plan on both the part of our elected officials from the state and the officials from the Gila River Indian Community. And you may have read the news about the agreement on the part of the Gila River Indian Community that has allowed the successful completion of Arizona's drought contingency plan. So overall, it was a big deal, and I was very pleased to have been invited to, to attend. And you'll probably see more about it on social media and in the news. Other than that, like Kristin, I attended the Spirit of the West Festival. We had a lot of fun, especially holding little baby goats from the Toggenberg Goat Farm, which is in Florence. And a lot of people there were enjoying the music from a group from Anthem, playing Western music. There were other demonstrations of Adobe brickmaking. It, it was a great event, and hopefully it can be continued over the next years. Seeing the Tom Mix car was also awesome. I wish it had been at the car show a few weeks ago, but maybe next year. So that's all I have. I, I'm sorry to be so long.
Councilmember Hawkins?
I think everything's been covered, except I'd like to remind people, the Remote Control Airplane Club, and they have cars also now at the Bond Field across from the rodeo grounds this Saturday. Starts at 10 o'clock, $3 a carload for your entrance, and then you bring your lawn chairs and whatever you want to eat or drink and watch the model airplanes. And the following weekend, at the Whitlow Rodeo Grounds, which is across the street from the Remote Control Airplane setup, is the Three Rail Ranch Rodeo. So we've got two events in a, two weekends in a row, right across from each other out there on 79. So that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes, I also attended the Caliente Spring Fling. And I agree, those people know how to party out there. It was, it was a lot of fun. I had several people come up and compliment the town on getting some of their issues resolved that they had with their setbacks and so forth. I was, I was pleased that they, they would even recognize me, but, but they did, and that was nice. Also, the, the thing out on the Indian Reservation that Karen attended, I've driven that road for the last four or five years. There's no signs out there about what that park is. The only thing you saw was slow down trucks on the road. And I guess that's all you're ever going to see because it's not going to be open to the public. But if you haven't seen Councilman Wall's account of it, you need to, you need to see that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have much to say because for the past week and a half, I've been out of commission. What I am going to say is make sure you wash your hands and take care. If you have a fever or you're not feeling well, the influenza is widespread in our area. I was hit with it, so I do apologize for some meetings that I was unable to attend. I did go to the Spring Fling last year. I did not go this year because the Lord knows I don't need to infect anybody. I'm healthy and clear now.
There was a lot of disinfectant out there.
So the, the last appearance I made for the town was at our first youth symposium, which was amazing. It was a great event. It was well-attended. We did have some trouble in regards to some youth in different communities making it here because of such extensive rains that flooded some roadways. But it was well put together, so I do want to thank our staff for that, as well as the pooch party where our residents were able to register their dogs and even adopt dogs. Next year, I'm not bringing my daughter because I heard about this dog for a week. And I just want to say thank you for everybody being here tonight. We are going to be going into executive session.
I have one other thing. I think Brian reminds me of it. Just remind people, if you haven't made your donations to the Vet Memorial, please do so. And also, I want to thank the warden. You know, they've had some money-raising events out at the prison. They're, they're always supporting us, and so we need to constantly thank those people.
Excellent. With that, we need a motion for executive session.
Make a motion. We adjourn to executive session.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.